Calls are the City of Forest Park Virtual Council meeting number thirteen sixty-six, June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. Let us at this time have the roll call.
Brown.
Here.
Herbie.
Here.
Holt.
Here.
Johnsons.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Ness.
Here.
Sylvester.
Here.
All of us are present and accounted for. For malady's sake, sake, we were, we probably should have done the pledge first, but since we didn't, let's take a moment to do that. Somebody here to lead that. Erin, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Actually, I don't have a flag, but, uh, yeah.
I know, I don't either. Go right ahead.
There you go. Alright, I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic. For which it stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty. And justice. Forgot the words for a second.
We got, we got through it. Next item on the agenda is the minutes. You should all receive copies of the minutes. And put the rest of the questions on our additions to the minutes, changes to the minutes. Hearing none, uh, the minutes will stand approved as presented, and we will move to item number three, presentation. There are no presentations. And Don, I think you said earlier, I was looking at the piece that we, we have, we had no people to sign up for communication from the public. Is that correct?
Nothing with regards to anything on the agenda this evening. We've had no communications, uh, on this, on any of these items, and from either the public or anyone else.
Thank you. Well, that being the case, we will move to item number five, reports of standing committee. The first of those would be Councilwoman Ness in public safety.
Um, thank you. I don't, um, have a, a report necessarily, but, um, Chief Arns did participate in a community conversation on community policing in Forest Park specifically, to share the, um, the ways that, um, we've been able to keep, um, our residents safe and acknowledge them, um, as, uh, equal individuals, and, um, the certain steps that we're taking and what the public can do to continue to support those efforts.
Any questions for Councilwoman Ness? Hearing none, Councilwoman Ness, I have no items for you for the work session of the twenty-second. Do you have any to add?
Uh, I do not, I do not.
Next, uh, report would be Wagerman, Councilman Hurd.
Uh, yes, I wanted to give an update on some of the things going on with the environmental awareness program. Uh, we have, uh, twenty households that have taken advantage of the fifty percent subsidy for tree removal, and a total of forty-eight, uh, trees have been removed. Uh, we also, people should know that, uh, they should be seeing, uh, the implementation of the energy aggregation program and their June Duke Energy Bills. In the large appliance collection, uh, which has been going on for about a month, we've collected twenty-three appliances from seventeen households. And in the reforested forest park, thirty-seven households have reserved sixty-three of the hundred trees that are available. So there's still, um, is an opportunity for people to participate in the reforested forest park. And that would conclude my report.
Any questions? Hearing none, uh, I have no items on the agenda for you for the work session of the twenty-second. Do you have any to add?
No, sir.
Next committee report is Community Development Committee, Councilwoman Moore.
Rose, on your.
Alright. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank the volunteers for coming out, um, to our produce, uh, pop-up over the last couple of months. And I especially want to thank Councilwoman Ness and Councilman, um, Brown for their support in our community regarding making sure that we address some food insecurities. Um, and also, I wanted to, um, discuss that there is going to be COVID-nineteen testing, um, conducted in partnership with the Cincinnati Health Department and Hamilton County Public Health. And it's at the City Link Center at eight-hundred Bank Street, Cincinnati, four-five-two-one-four. And it's June sixteenth, seventeenth, eighteenth. Um, and if you would like to register, please contact them at four-seven-eight-six-seven-nine-one, And it's free and open to the public. That completes my report.
Any questions for Councilwoman Moore? Thank you, Councilwoman Moore. I have, have two items on the agenda for you for the work session. One is the, uh, the short-term rental, uh, and the second one is, uh, Bellinger Road name change. Do you have any to add?
Uh, yes, can we discuss, um, missing, uh, street signs and also ordinance violations?
Street signs, uh, specifically just, just street signs in general, or?
Yeah, there's, um, several street signs that are missing, and residents, um, uh, would like us to address those.
Okay. And what was the second one?
And, um, ordinance violations, um, residents are, um, asking, what is the, um, or, what is the ordinance regarding multiple violations that continue to be violated, and how do we address those?
Okay. Uh, I can, I will add that to the agenda. Any question, any other questions for Councilwoman Moore? Hearing none, we will move next to Law Committee, Councilman Brown.
I have, uh, no reports or items to add to the agenda at this time.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Brown? Hearing none, uh, I have no items on the agenda for you. Uh, we'll, uh, move next to, uh, Human Resources Committee, Councilwoman Holt.
I do not have a human resource report, but the, um, certification commission did go out on the sixth and seventh with the judge. As far as I'm concerned, it was a success, but we will have a meeting on Wednesday, and I'll find out just how much of a success it was. That would end my report, thank you.
Any questions for Councilwoman Holt? Hearing none, Councilwoman Holt, I have no items for you. Do you have any to add?
No, I do not, thank you.
Next report would be Public Improvement and Facilities, Mr. Sylvester.
I did receive some communication from a couple of residents, uh, this past week, uh, question about some, uh, sidewalk breakage, uh, and driveway. I had asked that they, uh, submit, uh, their comments detailed and, uh, by way of email. And since I hadn't gotten that forwarded from Sally, they probably haven't done it yet. So I'll, uh, I'll follow up, or I'm sure, I'm sure they may contact me again, but I just wanted to get that noted. The area was pointed out, uh, along, uh, Hanover, but I get, uh, the Johnson Street, I didn't get that in the conversation, but I'll, uh, I'll follow up with it, but just wanted to get that noted.
Okay, uh, let me, let me ask you to do this, Mr. Sylvester. Would you, two things for, for two reasons. One, we had an old program for sidewalk repair, but it only, uh, involves the apron part. And there was, uh, there's usually an amount of money that is set aside, and it's, that one is usually on a first come, first served basis. So depending on what, what specifically they're talking about with sidewalk, it may be under that program. Secondly, um, periodically, uh, well, from time to time, there is a sidewalk repair. But again, uh, there is, there, there are restrictions or regulations saying what, which parts of the sidewalk the city is responsible for, and which parts of the sidewalk the resident is responsible for. So, uh, if you can, uh, follow up on that with the, uh, the city manager and our, uh, Public, uh, Public Works, they'll probably, uh, let you know which one, you know, based on the information they have, where those would fall.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
My, my understanding is that if the, if there is sidewalk upheaval being caused by a street tree, one that's in the right of way, that I believe the city, um, repairs that.
Well, that's why I said he needs to touch base with, uh, Public Works and the, uh, city manager, because no matter what the situation is, it depends on where in that sidewalk that happened.
What do I do?
Yeah, go ahead.
That, that was it, that, that was it, thank you.
Thank you. Next report is Internal Government Relations and Communications. Uh, this is my committee, uh, on starting Thursday of this week, we will resume, um, municipal, we will resume mayor's court. Uh, it will be obviously, uh, changes will be made to, uh, so that we are in compliance with all of the regulations that are required by, uh, uh, the Department of Public, the County Department of Public Health, as well as the governor's orders, uh, in terms of numbers of people we could have inside at any one time, and the seating arrangements, and, uh, those sorts of things. But it is, uh, the court's intent to start back this Thursday. Whether or not we will run court on a more regular basis to make up for the time that we've been off, has not yet been fully decided. We just, uh, just make a note that, uh, we will be starting that back this week.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We actually did start up two weeks ago, and, uh, it went very smoothly.
Good.
Uh, we got through the whole docket without a problem. Social distancing, mask, number of people allowed in, uh, we didn't have any issues at all.
And we are having court again this Thursday, though, right?
Yeah, tax court this Thursday.
Right, okay. Alright, uh, now within my report, unless anybody else has any comments or, and/or questions. Next item on the agenda then would be item number six, the mayor's report. Uh, just briefly, uh, I will report again that I have been involved with, uh, virtual meetings through both the county and the governor's office. Uh, and this week, I think was, uh, well, last week actually, on the tenth and the twelfth, and starting this week on the fifteenth, a number of venues reopened, um, and they, uh, but there, there were conditions to some of them reopening. One of the things that, uh, you may very well see is that a number of places, businesses specifically, that could have reopened, uh, fully have not, and that has, is probably more to do with the, uh, lack of, uh, workers than, uh, anything else. And again, uh, keep in mind that a lot of these are smaller businesses, so space would, would dictate, uh, just how much they can do, and whether or not in reopening, they can reopen under the guidelines that's been set by the Health Department and the Governor's Office. Uh, I will, I would add and note that a number of the, uh, fast food restaurants have not reopened on the inside and may not reopen on the inside, uh, again, uh, due to lack of, uh, a number of employees that are available to work, as well as the size of the, uh, size of some of the good. The same holds too for some of the banks. They, it's going to be a while. Uh, some of them are talking about not reopening inside until as early as August. What a, a number of these places are doing, however, is, I believe the library will do the same thing, where they will technically be open on the inside, but you can, you can only be admitted by, uh, prior appointment. Uh, so just kind of keep those things in mind. And though, these meetings with both the, uh, county and the governor's office are going to continue, uh, probably throughout the summer at least, so that they can get an idea, uh, get, uh, will be two-way information. We can tell them what we're seeing and what we think's going on, and they will give us updates and information on what they see is going on. Finally, um, I know the staff had, had prepared a resolution. Uh, it's, uh, a draft resolution that we will be, uh, we've been voting on tonight, and we're still going to be voting on that resolution. However, as legislature so often, uh, does in its operations, they basically scuttled first piece of legislation and just took it and poured it all into another number. So the wording of the resolution, uh, and, and the law did not change just the number. Uh, so, uh, that's the information that I have under the mayor's report. I'll answer any questions if there are any. Seeing no one, we'll go next to the city manager's report, Mr. Jones.
Everyone's hit a lot of the, uh, a lot of the points, so I'll just try and, uh, fill in some of the gaps here. In terms of the questions and concerns that I've been getting from a lot of the, the folks and the citizens. Uh, number one, every day I see someone wanting to file their taxes. More than once, several people coming up to City Hall. Again, we are moving the tax office because of the COVID situation to the senior center. That office is being made available. I believe, and Harlita can correct me, that we are, this week and the next couple of weeks, we're going to do by appointment only. And then, once we get everything, kind of the, the kinks worked out, make sure we've got everything ready to go, uh, we'll be ready for the tax season. Again, the taxes are due by fifteen. So we will be processing all taxes down in the senior center. We have more room, we have the ability to spread out, and we can do some distancing. We'll have, uh, a different, different procedures that we're going to be able to take advantage of and keep the public safe, as well as to keep, uh, our, um, employees safe. The, um,
Don?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, we are only on appointments this week.
Oh, just this week, okay.
We will go, um, to a, um, walk-in as of the twenty-second.
Okay, perfect. So, this week, if you need to get your taxes done, uh, make an appointment, call our tax office, and, um, but next, the week after that, next week, we'll be able, we'll be able to walk in and be, uh, taking care of, always have the, the, um, so I believe the process will work well, and I think, once people get to the right place, there, I'm sure there'll be, have a lot of people coming to City Hall. We're in the process of reopening City Hall to the public under a controlled situation where, uh, again, we're trying to make sure that we are able to as well as the public. So we're going through processes and procedures to get that open, hopefully by next Monday. It will be available to, uh, open up to the public again, and, um, but we'll, we're, we're not going to rush into it. We're, the, the procedures we have right now are working in terms of the people that need to get to City Hall. We're able to get things done, we're able to get building permits, we're able to get, um, stormwater permits, we're able to do all kinds of things. And, uh, so, once we, uh, uh, we, we finish the work on the front entrance, the ADA doors are installed, we've installed proper cameras and the, and the buzzers and so forth, so we're able to get people in and out. And, uh, now we're just going to make sure that we can, uh, adequately handle the folks that come in and make sure that we protect everyone. The, um, don't forget the census, if you're out there, make sure, this is very important for our city. Please do so, there's information on our website. Finally, I would say that, uh, when I finally, the recreation facilities are the second biggest question. Senior Center is going to be closed, obviously, while, while our tax office is in there. We're still working on things that we can do and programs that we can, that we may be able to run, things that we did in the past. Quite honestly, we're not going to be able to do again, that they would, at, at this time. The line dancing, and the, um, uh, you know, the card playing, things like that. We need to make sure that we're able to protect our senior citizens, because they're almost about vulnerable population, and we don't want to have any issues there. So, um, in any event, the seat, the, uh, tax office is going to be in there while their facilities are being refurbished. The, uh, for recreation, the parks are open. The, um, the facilities themselves, the, and when I say facilities, I mean, the, the play equipment, uh, the basketball courts, the best are going to reopen this week. We're waiting on the proper signage, we've ordered it, and once we get it, we'll put it up. And, uh, we'll be opening up the, under the direction and the advice and guidance of the, of the Himalaya County Public Health. They've given guidance on, uh, proper procedures that we need to follow to open up our facilities. We checked with our insurance company to make sure that, uh, we're not doing anything that would put us at risk. And, um, we'll be, uh, we'll be opening up, there will be, um, sanitation being done there, and that, it, it, they'll be sanitized, um, the, on a, on a regular basis, at least once a day. And, um, what I mean, the, the, the children's play equipment, the, um, and the basketball courts will be available again as well. We are going to ask that people, of course, do social distancing and so forth, but, um, we have right now, we're still waiting on final guidance for the basketball courts, but with a preliminary guidance is that they are available to be open, but we want to get that really nailed down to make sure that. So, the children's play equipment will be open this week. And, um, you can use, uh, the parks, eh, as you see necessary or want to. But you still have to abide by the, uh, governor's orders of, uh, in terms of the number of people you're allowed to have, as well as, um, social distancing. So we're going to encourage that and make sure that, you know, obviously, we want people to do that. But, um, they've been well-used over the last couple of weekends, if anybody's been down in the parks. Uh, there's been many people down there, uh, many outings, and looks like, you know, barbecues and, uh, people getting together. You know, some of them bigger than, than others, but, uh, by and large, they've been used, so, uh, Himalaya County Public Health has given us direction on that. I would, uh, uh, like to, uh, thank Council, Councilor Ness for her, uh, engagement with the police department. I thought it was very good and well-done, and, um, and, uh, I think it really speaks well for our police department and how we do things right. And, uh, I encourage anybody to go back and take a look at that, and, uh, I think you'll see that, uh, uh, our folks are, uh, our hearts are in the right place, our department's in the right place, and, uh, we're looking to be an example of the way communities can police themselves. Other than that, I am, uh, available for any questions.
Any question for City Manager? Hearing none, we will move to item number eight, all the reports, first of those being, uh, Law Director, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Sorry, I was a little late. I, the host wouldn't let me in, for some reason. Uh, some of my activities were, there's a recent Supreme Court decision about laser guns being used by police officers, and we used to have a more difficult standard on proving the, uh, admissibility of those guns. And the Supreme Court of Ohio has made it a lot easier in that we don't have to have expert testimony, uh, anymore. We just need the police officer to testify regarding training calibration. So I shared that decision with Chief Arns. Uh, also, uh, you're all familiar with the, um, uh, it's Airbnb home that's having these late-night parties. I was in conversation with the city manager and Chris Anderson, we're trying to work out a solution for, uh, that problem with, assuming it's going to keep on going. Also, the Inspirational Bible Church made a public records request that I worked with Sally on responding to. I reviewed the Fifth Third Bank Access Agreement with Harlita, and, uh, we had another public records request, uh, regarding, well, not a request, but an issue regarding the, um, a, a vehicle that was part of evidence in a case, and how do we handle that? So, those are some of the activities I've been involved in since last meeting. If you have any questions, please ask, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions for Law Director? Hearing none and seeing no one, thank you, sir. We'll move to the next report, the clerk's counsel, board.
You unmute Sally.
Sally, are you there?
She appears to have her mute button on.
Okay. Okay, we will get, we'll move on, and we'll come back to her, uh, when she is no longer muted. Now move to item number nine, new business, there is a motion. Is there a motion? Uh, this is in the rules.
Um, I would like the motion to suspend the rules, requiring the reading and pause on two separate days, and read for the first time by title only, ordinance numbers seventeen dash twenty-twenty and eighteen dash twenty-twenty.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded, we suspend the rules, requiring the reading and pause, eh, on two separate days and read for the first time by title only, ordinance is number seventeen-two-twenty and eighteen-two-twenty. Is there any discussion?
Only that these ordinance were posted six days prior to the meeting.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Sally, are you there yet?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
We'll, we'll take it, Sally, after this, uh, this, or this first order, we'll come back for your report.
Okay.
Thank you. Call, uh, order is twen- seventeen-twenty.
Brown. Hurd.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Ness.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
The, uh, motion to suspend the rule for seventeen twenty-twenty through eighteen twenty-twenty passes seven-zero. Uh, at this time, uh, we will, I'll entertain a, a motion on the, will the clerk please read the ordinance, seventeen twenty-twenty by title only?
Ordinance number seventeen dash twenty-twenty, amending annual twenty-twenty appropriation ordinance sixteen dash twenty-twenty.
Is there a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number seventeen dash twenty-twenty.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we adopt ordinance seventeen dash twenty-twenty. Any discussion?
Yes, um, this is, I mean, we do these appropriations ordinances and mending these, uh, periodically throughout the year. This, uh, concerns two things. One, um, the Cobblewood Parkway Tiff Fund, uh, wants, wants to allow for the fund to reimburse the general fund, uh, repaying in advance. Originally, when the fund was set up, it was only to receive transfers, but the new portion of the Tiff District, the Parkway portions, begun to generate revenues. This means that the general fund will have to provide as much support for debt payments. And so, in advance, it's going to be made, uh, if this is passed, um, to keep it from having a negative fund balance until the second half property tax settlement is dispersed, and then, uh, the advance would be repaid. The second issue is essentially, uh, as I understand it, a flow-through issue. The city received about twenty-three thousand in funds from the Ohio Demolition Fund. It was to be held in our refundable fee fund, and once the work was completed, which has been done. So, um, this would then, uh, allow that to be released. So I would urge adoption of this ordinance.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, with the clerk then, please call the real order seventeen twenty-twenty.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
She muted out. Sally, go ahead, we'll have to come back to her as well.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Ness.
At this time, the vote shows six to nothing and we'll come back on that after she is unmuted. And so the final vote would be, is currently six oh with one yet to vote. At this time, we'll go back to the reports and there, this report will be Clerk of Council's board.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'd like to report that ordinance numbers twelve dash twenty twenty and sixteen dash twenty twenty, as well as resolution numbers fifteen dash twenty twenty through seventeen dash twenty twenty were posted as required. And that concludes my report.
Any question for Clerk of Council? There are none. Councilwoman Ness, are you there?
I'm back. I couldn't hear anything and everything was frozen, sorry.
We, uh, the clerk was calling the roll on order seventeen twenty twenty, so she was calling for your vote.
Yes.
Thank you. Then the vote on order seventeen twenty twenty is seven zero. Next item on the agenda, item B. Ordinance number eighteen dash twenty twenty. Would the clerk please read that ordinance by?
Ordinance number eighteen dash twenty twenty. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary for the purchase on behalf of the City of Forest Park of three parcels of real property located at one one six two one Elwood Drive, one one four two one Gil Court and eight oh five Halesworth Drive and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Moore?
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I move to adopt ordinance number eighteen dash twenty twenty.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt ordinance eighteen dash twenty twenty. Is there any discussion, Councilwoman Moore?
Uh, yes, these three properties are all vacant, single-family lots on which the former house, uh, houses were torn down um, by the city using grant funding. They were demolished in two thousand fourteen and the city has the opportunity to purchase the land from Land Bank with a nominal fee of a thousand dollars. And I urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? There are none. Would the clerk then please call the roll on ordinance eighteen dash twenty twenty?
Holt.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Ness.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Ordinance number eighteen twenty twenty passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda is a motion.
I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and re-resolution numbers eighteen dash twenty twenty through twenty-one dash twenty twenty by title only.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we suspend the rule, require the reading in full and re-resolutions number eighteen twenty twenty to twenty-one twenty twenty by title only. Is there any discussion?
Only that these resolutions were posted six days prior to the meeting.
Any further discussion? There are none. Would the clerk please call the, uh, roll on this motion to suspend?
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Ness.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes seven zero. Next item to be considered is Resolution eighteen twenty twenty. Would the clerk please read that resolution by title only?
Resolution number eighteen dash twenty twenty, adopting tax budget for twenty twenty one and submitting same to the Hamilton County Auditor.
There are motion?
Uh, yes, I would move to adopt Resolution number eighteen dash twenty twenty.
Second.
The move and seconded, we adopt Resolution eighteen dash twenty twenty. Is there discussion, Councilwoman?
Uh, yes, the tax budget is the start of our budgeting process for next year. And what this does is submit to the county auditor our, our estimate of anticipated revenues, which are then certified in order to levy our, our taxes. And the general fund is going to be, because of COVID nineteen, the general fund is going to be reflecting a deficit estimated to cover planned expenses for up to two point one million. So the whole process of dealing with that imbalance will take place later in the year. This is just the first step and I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? There are none. Would the clerk please call the, uh, the roll on eighteen dash twenty twenty?
Moore.
Yes.
Ness.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes, Resolution eighteen twenty twenty passes seven zero. Next item is item B, Resolution nineteen twenty twenty.
Resolution number nineteen.
Go ahead, read it by title only.
Resolution number nineteen dash twenty twenty. A resolution consenting to the execution of a redevelopment incentive agreement between O K L Engineering, Inc. and the City of Forest Park, Ohio.
Is there a motion on the, the resolution, Councilwoman?
Um, I would move adoption of Resolution number nineteen dash twenty twenty.
Second.
The move and seconded, we adopt Resolution nineteen dash twenty twenty. Any discussion?
Uh, yes, O K L Engineering, which was formerly known as O K L Can Line, uh, has been a part of our business community for three decades. They're leasing a property in Sebring Drive that they've outgrown. And they have an opportunity to purchase another building in the same industrial park. And will invest one point five to two million on the purchase and another one million on new machinery. They currently have thirty full-time employees and would add another ten to twenty. Cities reviewed the project and determined that it is eligible for our redevelopment incentive. They're recommending two grants payable in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one and a partial rebate of tax withholding in twenty twenty-one. The rebate would be paid in twenty twenty-two. The total value would not exceed fifty-five thousand dollars and I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? There are none. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ness.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
The resolution passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda is Resolution, uh, twenty, twenty twenty twenty. The clerk please read, please read that resolution by title only.
Resolution number twenty dash twenty twenty. A resolution consenting to the execution of a redevelopment incentive agreement between Keyard Coffee and the City of Forest Park, Ohio.
Is there a motion?
Uh, yes, I would move adoption of Resolution number twenty dash twenty twenty.
Second.
The move and seconded, we adopt Resolution, twenty dash twenty twenty. Is there any discussion?
Uh, yes, this is a, a, a small company that would bring its roasting and distribution operation to a vacant building on our Northland Business District. They would invest five hundred thousand dollars to acquire and another perhaps two hundred thousand on new machinery and would bring seven full-time and four part-time employees into the city. They would also be projected to create another three to five employees. This fits within our redevelopment plan because it's a vacant property in one of our targeted business districts. And staff's recommending a five thousand dollar grant payable in twenty twenty, which would help us convert this vacant and underperforming building into an asset. So I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? There are none. Would the clerk please call the roll on Resolution, uh, twenty, twenty twenty?
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Ness.
The resolution passed, uh, seven zero. Next item on the agenda is Resolution number twenty-one dash twenty twenty. Uh, would the clerk please read this resolution by title only?
Resolution number twenty-one dash twenty twenty. A resolution amending the designation of depositories by city council and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with those depository agencies.
Is there a motion?
Uh, yes, I would move adoption of Resolution number twenty-one dash twenty twenty.
Second.
The move and seconded, we adopt Resolution twenty-one dash twenty twenty. Is there any discussion?
Uh, yes, um, this resolution would maintain Fifth Third as the city's primary depository. But it would also add A C I Worldwide and Fifth Third as credit card processors for online transactions. So I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? There are none. Would the clerk please call the roll on twenty-one twenty twenty?
Brown.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Ness. Sylvester.
Yes.
Okay, that resolution there will pass at seven zero. Next item on the agenda is item G. Resolution twenty-two dash twenty twenty. Would the clerk please call the roll on that? Would please read that resolution by title only.
Um, Mr. Mayor.
This.
That must be written in full, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Resolution number twenty-two dash twenty twenty. A resolution complying with A M H B forty-nine affirming that funds received by the City of Forest Park from Hamilton County Coronavirus Relief Distribution Fund may be expended only to cover costs of the City of, of Forest Park consistent with the requirements of Section five zero zero one of the CARES Act as described in forty-two U S C six oh one D and any applicable regulations and requesting its share of funds from the Hamilton County Coronavirus Relief Distribution Fund. Whereas the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act one one six Public Law one three six CARES Act was signed into law by the President of the United States on March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. And whereas the Ohio General Assembly established a process for distributing funds provided by the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act in amended House Bill four eight one of the one hundred thirty-third General Assembly, A M H B four eight one. And whereas the A M H B four eight one requires subdivisions receiving funds under Section one of the Act to pass a resolution affirming that the funds from the County Coronavirus Relief Distribution Fund may be expended only to cover costs of the subdivision consistent with the requirements of Section five zero zero one of the CARES Act as described in forty-two U S C six oh one D and any applicable, applicable regulations before receiving said funds. And whereas the City of Forest Park is requesting its share of the funds from the Hamilton County Coronavirus Relief Distribution Fund now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio, Section one. That the City Council and the City of Forest Park affirms that all funds received from the Hamilton County Coronavirus Relief Distribution Fund pursuant to A M H B four eight one be expended only to cover costs of the subdivision consistent with the requirements of Section five zero zero one of the CARES Act as described in forty-two U S C six oh one D and any applicable regulations and guidance only to cover expenses that, one, are necessary expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency with respect to the Coronavirus Disease twenty nineteen COVID nineteen. Two, were not accounted for in the City of Forest Park's most recently approved budget as of March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. And three, were incurred during the period that begins on March first, twenty twenty and ends on December thirtieth, twenty twenty. Section two, in compliance with A M H B four eight one, be resolved by the Council of the City of Forest Park that the city finance director is hereby authorized to take all necessary action to, one, on or before October fifteenth, twenty twenty, pay any unencumbered, unencumbered balance of the money in the City of Forest Park's local Coronavirus Relief Fund to the Hamilton County Treasury. Two, on or before December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, pay the balance of any money in the City of Forest Park's local Coronavirus Relief Fund to the state treasurer, treasury in the manner prescribed by the Director of the Ohio Office of Budget and Management. And three, provide any information related to any payments received under A M H B four eight one to the Director of the Office of the, to the Director of the Ohio Office of Budget and Management as requested. Section three, this resolution shall be in full force and take effect from and after its passage.
Uh, I am going to ask, uh, Earth Vice Mayor Holt to make a motion, to make this motion and ask Second Vice Mayor Moore to second it. That way I don't have to go through the practice of releasing the chair and then doing all of that and coming back. So, Councilwoman Holt, would you make a motion on this resolution? Please, twenty-two twenty.
I would like to make a motion for adoption of Resolution number twenty-two twenty twenty.
Second.
The move and seconded, we adopt Resolution twenty-two dash twenty twenty. The, I will, uh, speak to this motion. This is, this is a requirement that, uh, we have received from, in this resolution, we are required, in order to, all local governments must register with the Office of Budget and Management's, uh, updated grant portals. This municipality will not be able to receive any CARES Act funding unless they register through O M B. We receive, the agency released information, uh, on the procedures for accepting registrations from all municipalities, uh, so that funds can be quickly be distributed, uh, after House Bill four eighty-one is enacted. It's important to note that the local governments can only access CARES Act fund until October twentieth. So you can see there's not a large window here. And as, uh, was stated in the resolution, any funds that we don't use, we must return to the U S Treasury. While distributions to villages and other municipalities will flow through the state county auditor's office. O M B considers these local, local government to be, uh, a sub-recipient of the state. And they will restructuring, reporting and monitoring in that fashion. So therefore they need to collect the information and create a process that will be streamlined and made, made easy for these funds to be distributed. Uh, what this resolution does is allow us to move forward with applying for these funds. And also it is consistent with what we've been trying to do all along in terms of leveraging our resources uh, as best we can so that we don't have to tax our own citizens anymore than would be absolutely necessary. And when I'm using the word tax here, I don't necessarily mean taxes, taxes are being taxed in or asked. And of course, staff has recommended the approval of this resolution. And I can, I would add to that, that in my conversations and meetings, uh, with the mayors, uh, in Hamilton County, this is one of those things where there are, there are no absolute guarantees of how much we get. But, uh, we've been encouraged, uh, that we need, that everybody needs to get his or her resolution in and on file as soon as possible. Fortunately for us, uh, that, where some of the other municipalities are not so fortunate, they moved ahead and passed their resolution. They may, uh, we waited to get, uh, the draft form and wording. They made, they did their own and they passed them and then. the, uh, draft form and wording, uh, they made, they did it all and they passed them and then, as I said earlier, the House decided to, to scuttle the old, uh, the old language and to roll all of that language into a new House bill. So all those people who had passed this prior to Friday now have to go back and redo it. Uh, so we, we all got to, hopefully we all got to have to do it once, you know, you can't nev- never say never when you're dealing with the legislature. But, uh, hopefully they won't change it again and roll it into something else. If that happens, we'll have to have a special meeting and come back and change the numbering and do this all over again. Hopefully that won't happen. So, uh, I would urge, uh, the council to, uh, vote yes on resolution twenty two twenty. Is there any further discussion? Mr. City Manager, did you have anything to add on to this?
No, we've, um, we're ready to go on this. We've been collecting the information since day one. All of our, um, department heads are in files that have expenses ready to get reimbursed and Harlita, uh, went out, I think today or Friday and, uh, got us on the portal. So we're ready to go as soon as this resolution's passed.
I have a quick question. Will that, will, will some of those dollars extend to, uh, re- reopening of businesses? Like small businesses in our city that perhaps, is that not okay?
Believe it is.
To my knowledge, I think these are for, thi- thi- this is supposed to be to reimburse what we spent. Already.
Gotcha.
Uh, now there have been several questions about what these dollars can be used for and, uh, uh, how people might be able to manipulate what they did to claim that some of these things were for, you know, was a result of, uh, COVID nineteen. Uh, it, it's one of those deals where I guess you could, you could basically claim that everything relates to it. But when you're in this kind of a competition for money, uh, you're probably better off to do it as we have done it. We've been, uh, fortunately, our staff has been keeping track as we go. So we know just about to, you know, exactly what to include and what not to include. Uh, I think, uh, Donna said all along, you know, we don't, we don't want to go out and manufactor stuff because if, if for no other reason, it's going to take them longer to review somebody's registration and application if there are questionable things and that it would, if you just put down exactly what you did, why you did and so forth. Any further discussion of questions? There are none. Would the clerk then please call the roll, uh, resolution twenty two dash twenty twenty?
Kirby?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness? Sylvester? You're on mute, Reggie.
You're on mute, Reggie. Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Resolution twenty two dash twenty, uh, twenty passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda is a motion?
I would move, uh, to receive the general fund summary report as contained in the departmental reports.
Second.
Uh, it's been moved to receive the general fund summary report as is contained in the departmental report. Any discussion? There are none. All those in favor of the motion to receive the general fund summary report, that be known by the sign of voting aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Um, anything else for the good of the order?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm. I got your notes.
Uh, can I, um, can I make a comment?
Sure.
Um, well, actually asking a question. Is there any way that we can post the COVID nineteen testing site uh, information to our webpage, our website?
Yes, give me the information. We'll have it for you.
Okay, and I just want to encourage anyone who is, um, would like to get tested to please come down. I'll be down there volunteering and, um, and testing. Um, and so, um, this is your opportunity to get access to free testing. And so I do encourage, um, it is drive-through or if you, if you walk, you can walk up, but it is drive-through. You don't have to get out your car. Um, and so just encouraging, um, residents, you know, uh, or the public, if you would like to get testing, this is an opportunity to get it done.
Uh, Councilwoman Moore, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Could you find out for us, and you may already know, are the testing sites restricted by county? In other words, uh, if you live in Hamilton County, can you get tested in Butler County or vice versa? Do you know?
Um, usually each county has their own, um, setup and our setup is through Hamilton County, uh, Public Health and the Health Department and then their partners. So each county has their own kind of, um, every Ohio one has access. Um, but each county kind of coordinates their own sites and how they're gonna, and where they set their sites up.
Okay, the reason I was asking because, uh, obviously we born on Butler County and I know that, uh, there is one, uh, from Forest Park. It's about a three-minute drive, but it's in Butler County, so, you know, which would obviously be closer, but I didn't know. That's why I asked the question about, are we?
So in that situation, I would encourage you to call the numbers. Each county should have a number that you can call and you ask that question and they could probably answer it.
We'll try and get some information on that tomorrow and, uh, if you're ready, we'll do much.
Yeah, okay, uh, also, uh, now in, in, in relation to next week's work session on the twenty second, if we are, uh, we will probably have that work session and more than likely, we would be looking to move that work session time back to, uh, you know, the five thirty, six o'clock tab. Um, so Sally, uh, will be contacting each of us to see what, what is, what's a good time. If that time does not work, we would then do, uh, the normal work session time or depending on, I think we have four items, uh, the fifth one being a recess, we might very well move that work session meeting, uh, uh, to say a seven thirty or seven forty-five, uh, prior to the first meeting in July. But in any rate, Sally will be in touch and let you know which, what time we're gonna meet, but whatever, whatever the timing is, that meeting will be a, uh, virtual meeting also.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Comments? Or leave?
Yes, I just have one.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes. Hello? I did hear you.
Okay, sorry, I can't hear anyone. Um, so-
Okay, I'm, go ahead. I'm listening. I'm trying, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Everything is really slow over here, sorry. Um, last month in our, um, at, for the Forest Park, uh, Community of Churches Resource Team, uh, we fed almost nine hundred families, little over nine hundred families and, um, we had a great response. So, uh, we have upped that to, um, three hundred and fifty, um, boxes, uh, in addition to, um, shooters and still, um, has played a really wonderful role, um, in that support. And, um, we'll get continued support from Community Action Agency, which is really, because a lot of times there, that help, we don't get to access, um, all the way out here. And so that's really, um, important. And, um, Free Store Food Bank, along with Matthew Twenty Five Ministries and a host of other ones. So that will be this Saturday, uh, at the Kemper Road Christian Church at ten a.m. to twelve p.m. We'll also have some uh, civic, uh, documents available for families and, um, free hand sanitizer as well. And each of the families, um, they'll get two back, two, a box and a pack.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order from anybody? There are none. Meeting is adjourned. Good to see you all.